Good evening and welcome to the July 9th meeting of the Newport News City Council. If you're here to speak before council tonight, we ask that you fill out a card located in the lobby and mark the item to which you wish to address. If the item you wish to address is not on the agenda, we ask that you mark Item I, which a matter is germane to the business of council. The, uh, we have a light system on our podium. After you give your name and address, the green light will come on. At the end of two minutes, the yellow light will appear. And at the end of three minutes, the red light will appear and we ask that you take your seat. The city code identifies the procedure for citizen participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides an opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to the business of council. Matters that are germane to the business of council means matters that the city council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, or your organization, including campaign information. Copies of the city ordinance regarding citizen participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. We also ask at this time if you would silence your phones. As usual, we will have an invocation and a pledge of allegiance and we invite Elder Darren, Darren Lyons from Bethel Restoration Church to deliver an invocation to the city council. Afterwards, Councilwoman Cherry will lead us in the pledge. For both, will you please stand?
Good afternoon, good evening. May we all come together for invocation of prayer. While we do thank the divine once again for another council session. Here we come together in these great chambers to conduct the affairs of government for this great city of Newport News. Bless this mayor and vice mayor. Bless this manager and assistant managers and all divisions that are represented here today. We thank you for all the citizens who have come today. Let every resolution, let every ordinance, let every presentation be done in the decency and in the order. Divine peace rest on these chambers and let all council chamber members and participants say amen.
Please join me in the pledge of the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I'm going to ask if Mr. Cortez Higgs, along with the Catalyst Effect Team and the Silence Empowers Violence Team, please meet me at the podium. All right. We're here tonight to have a resolution of recognition of the Catalyst Effect and the Silence Empowers Violence Community Care and Action Teams. Pastor Cortez Higgs, the director and CEO of the Catalyst Effect, will be here to accept the resolution along with the other team members. Whereas the council for the city of Newport News, Virginia, would like to recognize and commend the Catalyst Effect and the Silence Empowers Violence Community Care and Action Teams. And whereas in December 2017, the Catalyst Effect launched a collaborative nationwide youth-led awareness-to-action movement called Silence Empowers Violence: Break the Code, to address the problem of unreported and unsolved crimes and violence. And whereas the Catalyst Effect Team created and actively engages participants in youth-led Silence Empowers Violence Community Care and Action Teams. These teams are encouraged and empowered to break the code of silence when it comes to violence by being a voice for those who are afraid to speak up and take action and by taking a public stand against violence and crime in their respective communities. They also create violence prevention intervention and post-intervention community engagement initiatives and opportunities. And whereas in 2017, the Silence Empowers Violence Community Care and Action Teams hosted the first Silence Empowers Violence: Break the Code Youth Symposium in Newport News. This symposium was youth-led and participants, including other youth, adults, law enforcement, educators, and clergy members, took part in various forms and educational trainings. And whereas in 2018, the Silence Empowers Violence Community Care and Action Teams hosted a two-and-a-half-mile Break the Code Walk to bring community awareness to their cause. The walk concluded with a community resource fair for participants to learn about and partner with local violence prevention organizations. And whereas to help accomplish their mission, the Catalyst Effect and the Silence Empowers Violence Community Care and Action Teams have empowered, have, have partnered, rather, with the U.S. Department of Justice, Newport News Public Schools, Newport News Department of Human Services, Youth Services Division, Newport News Youth Gang and Violence Prevention, Newport News Police Department, the Messiah Center, City Life, Life House, EMAUS, and Real World Church, and faith-based organizations, businesses, and community individuals. And whereas in 2019, House Joint Resolution Number 630 Designating the Third Full Week of September as Silence Empowers Violence: Break the Code Awareness to Action Week in Virginia, was passed by the House of Delegates and the Senate of Virginia. And the, and whereas the Catalyst Effect and the Silence Empowers Violence Community Care and Action Teams will observe Silence Empowers Violence: Break the Code Awareness to Action Week by educating communities about the psychological trauma and monetary effects of unresolved and unreported crimes. And whereas the city council of Newport News wishes to recognize and commend the Catalyst Effect and the Silence Empowers Violence Community Care and Action Teams on their efforts in making the city of Newport News a safer place to live, learn, work, and play. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Newport News, Virginia, that it hereby recognizes and commends the Catalyst Effect and the Silence Empowers Violence Community Care and Action Teams in the city of Newport News and extends its best wishes for continued success. And two, that it hereby recognizes and draws to the attention of all citizens of the city of Newport News, the Silence Empowers Violence: Break the Code Awareness to Action Week during the third full week of September. And three, that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the records of this body and that a copy be presented to the Catalyst Effect and Silence Empowers Violence Community Care and Action Teams. And lastly, that this resolution shall be in effect on and after the date of its adoption, May 28, 2019. So this is the resolution that I present to you.
Thank you, Mayor Price. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm gonna step out of the way and let the real heroes of this movement do some talking. But first and foremost, I want to say, uh, I'm, thank you. I'm thankful for my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ for the grace, mercy, and wisdom that He gives us to even do this and the courage, because this movement takes courage. Um, I'm thankful to the parents of these students. If the parents would take a, a quick moment to stand or raise your hand, would you do that really quick, the parents of these students? And this couldn't be done by us alone. Uh, this is a collaborative movement. We have, um, other community individuals and community partners from the police department, Department of Human Services. Um, if you're in the building, would you wave your hand or stand real quick if you're one of our community partners? And last but not least, um, I say thank you to our honorable city council, our mayor, our city manager, um, for recognizing students and continuing to encourage them on in the work they're doing. And I'm going to get out of the way and allow the president of the action teams to say a brief word, Ms. Sanaya Higgs.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sanaya Higgs and I'm the president of the SCV Action Teams. Once again, I would like to say thank you to everybody who stood with us and behind us and supporting us in what we do. I'd also like to thank God because He gave us the wisdom to create this thing and real transformation happens in hearts and minds and we know it's impossible to change hearts and minds without having God's help, so I'd like to thank God for that. Our hope as youth is that we will have the adults of our city, of our nation, stand behind us in supporting and participating in our movement and just committing to standing with us as youth to make a better difference for our city. We know that violence isn't going to end overnight, but it's like the old riddle says, "How do you eat an elephant?" The answer is one bite at a time. We know that we don't have to do anything huge to make a giant impact. It's the small steps that lead to our big impact. I want to thank all of you for helping us take one more step to our big impact and always remember that Silence Empowers Violence: Break the Code.
We are now at the public hearing section of our agenda. Page four, Item E1, is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute the relocation of the Skiffs Creek Access Easement held by the city across property owned by Greenmount Associates LLC, located at 1651 Greenmount Parkway in James City County. This easement relocation is requested by Greenmount Associates LLC to enable the sale of the property for development. Relocating the access easement will not conflict with the city operation of Skiffs Creek. In exchange for the city's releasing and vacating a portion of its access easement, Greenmount will provide a new access easement to the city. A notice of public hearing has been published for the required four consecutive weeks. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any cards? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Item F contains the following items: Minutes of the work session of June 25th, Minutes of the special session of June 25th, Minutes of the regular meeting, and a request to adopt an ordinance accepting Glen Meadow subdivision Street and improvements into the city's street system. Do any of these items need to be removed by council? If not, a motion to approve the consent agenda items F1 through F4, all-inclusive, is in order.
Some move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Ms. Mayor, I would like to, um, say that, um, for consent agenda number four, where it talks about, um, the owner paid for the street, um, which now becomes eligible for state maintenance reimbursements to the city. Um, and I think that this is really important, that we highlight that, um, in this development, that the owner, at the owner's expense, paid for the road. And I think that that's really important, that the citizens understand that they are paying for this road and not the city. And I think that we need to, um, adhere to that in other projects that we have. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Item G1, Madam Manager.
Yes, the first item is a request to approve a resolution approving the capital improvements plan for fiscal year 2020 to 2024 for the city of Newport News, Virginia, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards? Thank you. Samuel L. Ure, Jr. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Price, Mayor, Vice Mayor Vick, and other members of the Newport News City Council. My name is Sam Ury. I live at 302 Penrith Crossing, Yorktown, Virginia. Today I am speaking to you as an individual. Usually I come before you spouting off a bunch of facts to support the proper funding of the school division's budget. Today I will speak in support of funding the CIP with emphasis on Huntington's construction, not just planning, and the systemic funding of the CIP for the school division. Mary will make some fact-based comments later. Today I want to tell you a story. It's a personal story. It's a true story of a school division who chose not to publicly acknowledge a problem. Many of you may remember Picocson had some major mold and mildew problems in their buildings a while ago. An adjacent community, at that same time, could have had the same allegation made to them but denied that they had a problem. At that same adjacent county that had the major mold and mildew problem, there were some specifics I probably need to mention. They decided they were gonna shut down their air conditioners over the summer. And in a cinder block building that builds up mold, mildew, condensation, so forth and so on. So the mold and mildew build up on every desk, table, chair, window, and everything else. Extra custodians were brought in to clean up the problem. I, along with a few of my peers, were complaining that after the cleaning, there was still a problem. At that time, the school's windows could be opened. I was told to just open the windows to get fresh air. Upon opening the window with a witness, there was extensive mold around the window in such a way that when you opened the window, you actually were allowing more mold into your classroom. The custodian was told to clean up with Clorox. An assessment of air quality was demanded and completed. They did not share what the results of that mold assessment were with me. I was called by my school custodian who said, "You need to come down here right now." I traveled, I'm very close to the school, traveled to the school, and recognized that people were in hazmat suits cleaning my room. I guess I was lucky to be called overacting or over in a non, or overacting to a nonexistent problem. Other people in the building had the same problem. When teachers are telling you something, we are not lying. We're not doing it just for ourselves. We're trying to protect the children that are our and your responsibility. When trust is unbroken, you learn to get the training and education on your own. I attended what was called the Seventh Annual Indoor Air Quality Tools for School National Symposium in Washington DC, put out by the Environmental Protection Agency. Now I have the knowledge to know what to look for, how to help others, 'cause knowledge is power. Newport News, please don't put yourself in the same situation. Thank you.
Brandia Wills? Brandy, I'm not sure. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brandy Wills. I live at 756 Michelle Drive, Newport News, Virginia. I'm here to discuss the improvement of Huntington Middle School. I was a teacher at Huntington for 11 years until the door shut in June of 2018. I, um, listened to the last meeting that y'all had and was told that teachers were telling the truth about what was going on in Huntington. And I was thoroughly disgusted. There were bugs, there were, there, I could give you the classroom that had the mold, and it was cleaned up, administration was told, but as you can see, the building was finally closed down. I think that y'all should give that money, as much money as you can, to open, reopen Huntington, because the kids are missing it. We, I'm at Heritage now, there's only one eighth grade left, and then that's it for Huntington, until y'all decide what y'all are gonna do, the city and the school system. So y'all need to come together and do that. Thank you.
Mary Voss?
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, Mary Voss, 350 Williamsburg Court, Newport News, 23606. Um, to start off, I just want to commend Councilwoman Scott for her comments in the work session this afternoon. I, I completely agree that important public projects like a pool at Denby Community Center and the renovation of Grissom Library in North District and Huntington Middle School in South District, 12 to 18 months to just start a study is too long, by the way, should not be sacrificed and put on the back burner for development projects in Central District. The $50 million Scott Center and a $30 million city center parking garage from the FY 2018 budget are now being used as excuses to postpone long-anticipated, long-promised public projects. I also want to commend Councilwoman Cherry for pushing back against sweetheart deals for developers and private companies at the work session today. Saying no to things like taxpayer-funded parking garages will make it easier for the city to fund important public projects like our public schools, public libraries, and public community centers. Each year I've seen how the city manager and budget director can craft excuses and twist data to justify a consistently low level of funding for our public schools. But let's look at some big picture facts about school funding in Newport News. Separate and unequal. Newport News Public Schools has 4.3 million square feet of building space, almost double the city's 2.2 million square feet of public building space. Yet in the city manager's FY 2019, FY 2023 CIP budget, school buildings receive less total funding than city buildings, despite having nearly double the square footage and despite NNPS school buildings serving far more people. NNPS has 4,688 employees, while the city funds only 2,625 positions from its general fund. In addition, NNPS public schools serve nearly 29,000 public school children in its buildings. Our school buildings have far more occupants than city buildings and much more wear and tear over time. So why are our school buildings getting only $10.53 per square foot in CIP funding while city buildings receive $20.73 per square foot in the FY 2019, 2023 budget? 67% of NNPS students are on free and reduced lunch. Teaching is a predominantly female profession. Teachers, teacher assistants, school counselors, cafeteria workers, and many other teaching support staff are predominantly female. I hope that the majority of our city's children living in poverty and the majority of our NNPS teachers and staff being female is not the cause of our NNPS school buildings getting only about half the funding per square foot as the city's public buildings. And that's what I have today. Please vote against this budget, um, especially North and South District reps. This budget is a disservice to the North and South District by postponing funding for a public pool in Denby and for Grissom and by postponing for, funding for Huntington Middle School. Thank you very much. Please vote against this budget. It will be a consideration in May 2020. I can assure you that.
Good evening. Once again, I come before you on behalf of the rebuilding of Huntington Middle School. The adolescent years can be very difficult and schooling close to home is beneficial to children. The school serves as a beacon for the community and a guiding light for education. We've always had pride in our school, even when vitally necessary repairs were overlooked. And it doesn't matter if only six of the, of each class are successful. There is only one Martin Luther King. There is only one Pearl Bailey. There is only one Charles Drew. There's only one Maya Angelou, one James Baldwin, and one George Washington Carver, six, to name a few. You can stifle the process of just one black child who could thrive at Huntington Middle School to do good for the world by continuing the legacy of the school or on present grounds or erase the possibilities by not recognizing the need for Huntington Middle School and doing nothing but plans on paper.
Pamela Hall? Good evening.
Good evening, city council members and citizens of the Commonwealth. My name is Pam Hall and I live in the Southeast Community. In my opinion, as leaders of this city, you are setting a poor example for the children about what is important in this city. Allocating $31 million for another parking garage in city center rather than supporting the education of the children who are the future of this city. The rebuilding of Huntington is crucial to the success of Newport News, school maintenance, and the retention of the best and brightest to mold the mind, the minds of our children, our educators. We should put money towards these goals. We must be better examples for the children and show them education is better than incarceration or death. In my opinion, you are out of touch with the constituents you were elected to serve. Huntington has served the Southeast Community as a venue for concerts by the Unifix, many of whom attended Huntington High School, a site for weekly church services, a site for Little League basketball, a venue for state band competitions, a site for fall family fun days hosted by alumni members, beautification day hosted by the alumni. Soccer teams use the football field. Citizens and the fire department use the track field. Saturday SOL study sessions were held where the alumni provided breakfast for the children and staff. Since closing, most of these events have ceased. HUD, the citizens of, the citizens and the school board members were not told funding for Huntington would be based on acceptance of the city's vision for the area, which includes closing 30th Street to join the two individually-owned properties. You were not elected to promote your agenda, but to do what is in the best interest of the constituents who you courted for votes and donations. So do the right thing. Lead like Barack Obama, not Number 45. Reallocate and appropriate the funds to start the design process for a 22nd century Huntington that was budgeted in 2009, 2.8 million. Our children and our Southeast Community deserve better.
Matthew? I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name. Matthew? Yes, that's... Sorry, I just couldn't read.
No, no, my handwriting is terrible. Uh, good evening, Mayor Price, Vice Mayor Vick, City Council. Um, I didn't really have an agenda when I came here tonight. I didn't really think that I was gonna be speaking, but I wanted to come and speak on behalf of Huntington. Uh, a quick story. I have a friend whose mom was recently trying to sell his house in Newport News. He lives up in the, uh, the north end, well, she used to live up in the north end. She's been trying to sell her house for four or five years now. They did a bunch of improvements on it. They did the shingles, they did all the stuff, they painted it, they made it nice. It's a beautiful house now. It's a beautiful house now. The problem is, is everybody that comes in to look at this sees that it's in the Newport News City School District. When they come, they think that maybe it's on the edge of Yorktown, because Yorktown is a desired school district to be in. But they find out that it's Newport News City, and they've lost several sales because they figured that it was in the Newport News City School District. I'm here tonight to let you know that our schools are what's gonna make this city great. There's no people that are gonna move here, no industry that's gonna grow unless we get these schools back online. And I think Huntington would be a good start. I believe at one point there was talks of making it a magnet school, having a wonderful place for kids to go, a place for a community to go, which was just mentioned, to have stuff down on the south end. I think that would be a great idea. I really think that this is a point where we should start looking at the children. I understand that the goal of the city council is to allocate funds and ensure that the city of Newport News does really well, and that's bringing in revenue and making sure that all of that revenue comes in and stays within the city. The best way to do that is to make sure that you have good public schools. And if we can start to raise our public schools above Hampton, above Yorktown, we'll have people coming to flock in this area to want to live here and build their lives here and build their families here for the future. Thank you for your time. That's really all I had.
Those are all the cards I have. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
This was not.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. It's like, is there a motion to approve the resolution? We have that too? All right. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, as I shared in work session today, in reviewing the CIP from last year and then to look at what we have before us for this year, I am thankful to the city manager and all the staff, all the hard work that you have done to get us to this place with the CIP. I did express my concern for some of the funding that we are continuing to put out for certain entities. I stressed my concern because some of those funds would become general obligation bonds, and that means more tax revenue for our citizens to incur. And I just think that it's really important for us to really look at what we're doing. And I brought up the entity about the road being paid for by the developer, because I think when we look at what we have in the CIP, some of the work that's being done is done by private developer. And I take issue when the city continues to spend money to help private development for some and not for all. And so I'm not going to vote in favor of the CIP, because I think we really need to take a stand, I need to take a stand to say either we're gonna do it for all or for none. I think it's really important that we look at the revenue sharing piece of that, and we weren't able to get a handle on that today, to say what the revenue sharing is gonna be. And I think it's just, it would be ludicrous of me to think that it's just gonna turn out to be in favor of the city necessarily, or not to be. But I just think that I have to take a stand to say either we're gonna do it for all or for none. And so I'm not gonna vote in favor of that. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. And I too expressed my concern in the work session today about the CIP and my concerns. My concern is simple. I've been on the council 17 years. I've been a supporter of every district. Whatever projects come up, we say economic engine, we say, you know, improve the area, we say whatever, and I've been in support of it. And I feel as though the North District has been neglected. The projects that were moved off the CIP this time, they were in the North District, any, all of our large projects, these Phase Two of the Community Center, the Grissom Library, Fire Station, everything is like just pushed over. And I just, I just have a real problem with that. In 2010, when I ran for the third time, my slogan was "One City, One Vision," and it wasn't, it wasn't supposed to be a code word. It was supposed to be something that we could all grasp and, and think about how we spread our projects equally across the city. When we didn't have land to do anything, I didn't expect anything. But now we do have land to do things, and I expect that some of our projects should take a little more precedent than some of the others. And then it was a smaller front to me today to see our projects in the North District pushed further off the CIP and another project added on the CIP that would even happen before our project in the North District. So I have some real concerns, and I'm not saying this as any disrespect to our city manager and her staff, I know they work hard, but I think in the, in the vein of camaraderie and reciprocity and being a team, I think we should do a better job of supporting each other's district. In that way, when one win, we all win, and that's the way I have voted in the past. So tonight, I have some real, as Dr. Cherry used the word, challenges with this CIP, and I just, I have to voice my concern, because if I did not represent the citizens who voted me into office to do this job, if I did not advocate for them, I don't feel as though I would be doing my job. So I, my, my point's on the record, Madam Clerk, I made sure that it's clear on the record what my position is, not that I'm, you know, bashing anybody, but I'm trying to advocate and support the North District that I represent. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Any further comments? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Against.
Councilman Harris?
Against.
Councilman Jenkins?
Against.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
I'm against it. Sorry.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion fail, 4-3.
This is a request to adopt an ordinance amending and reordaining City Code, Chapter 6, Animals and Fowl, Article 1, in general, Section 6-1, Point 1, Definitions Generally, and Article 3, Animal Welfare Ordinance, Section 6-78, Unattended Tethering of Dogs Prohibited, Exceptions, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? I'm sorry, are there any cards first?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
The move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry? Four. Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, 7-0.
Item G3, Madam Manager.
This is a request to adopt an ordinance amending and reordaining City Code, Chapter 30, Pawn Brokers, Buyers of Old Gold and Silver, Article 1, Pawn Broker, Section 30-1, Definition of Pawn Broker, Section 30-2, License Required, License Authorized by Court, Building Designated in License, Penalty, Section 30-3, Bond Required, Private Action on Bond, and Section 30-7, Records to Be Kept, Credentials of Persons, Pawn and Goods, in Article 3, Section 30-32, Records to Be Kept, Copy Furnished to Local Authorities, and Section 30-34, Credentials and Statement of Ownership Required from Seller, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Seven.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry? Four. Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, 7-0.
Item G4, Madam Manager.
This is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries in James City County to operate a boat launch and park on city-owned property adjacent to the Dyson Reservoir in James City County, and I recommend approval.
Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Seven.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I just get the name of this park?
I'm gonna defer to the, the Water Works Director. The name of the park?
You just referred to it as Dyson Park.
Dyson, okay. Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Cherry? Four. Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, 7-0.
Item G5.
This is a request to approve a resolution authorizing a lease between the City of Newport News and the Industrial Development Authority for the Coats and Clark Site Building located at 5849 Jefferson Avenue, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the transaction, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
The move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to know, do we have any other plans for that property that anybody has talked about?
Not at this time that I'm aware of. It's where the warehouse is, where the old police precinct was.
Right.
There's some other discussion about moving some of the things from City Farm that are currently related to the police department to that site, like the impound lot, but in terms of other development, not that I'm aware of.
Because that has really been a kind of thorn in the side for a long time, I think. I thought we were gonna try to do something with it and develop it.
That would be before my time. I'll go back and check. I'm not, I'm not aware of any development plans, other than what has been there.
All right. Thank you.
Call the roll.
Councilwoman Cherry?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Vice Mayor Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Motion carry, 7-0.
Okay, we have no appropriations tonight, so we're now, citizen comments on matters remain to the business of council. I will call the cards as presented. Antonio Thompson.
Good evening. Vote Trump 2020. In the name of Jesus Christ, Allah, you Akbar, Aisalamualaikum. My name is Antonio Thompson, P.O. Box 413, Newport News, Virginia, 23607, phone number 757-243-7150. The legalization of marijuana, Holy Bible, Book of Genesis, Chapter 1, Verse 11, 12, and 29. And God said, "Let the earth bring forth the herb yielding seed after His kind, whose seed is in itself upon the face of the earth." And God saw that it was good. And God said, "Behold, I have given you every herb yielding seed which is upon the face of the earth, and every tree in the which is the fruit of a tree yielding seed. To you it shall be for food." Ezekiel, Chapter 34, Verse 29. And I will raise up for them a plant of renown. The legalization of marijuana is the plant of renown. Also, one of the many herbs yielding seed which is now upon the face of the earth. Revelations, Chapter 2, Revelations, Chapter 22, Verse 2. And the leaves of the plant of renown is for the healing of the nations. Medical marijuana to help the healing of peoples suffering and in need of the legalization of marijuana. The legalization of marijuana here in the corporation of Newport News will enrich our treasury by billions, and you people keep talking about millions, by billions! The legalization of marijuana globally from the corporate ships and trees. Export all over the world. The market is there, the medicine is needed, and the war is coming. You gonna need more than morphine, you gonna need more than oxycodone. Fitna, you gonna need more than all that. Cocaine, you gonna need more than, you gonna need marijuana. The healing of all the nations. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Sorry, I can't see the first name.
Janelle.
Janelle, I'm sorry. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Janelle McFadden.
Would you raise the mic?
Oh, certainly.
Yes, sir.
Is that better? My name is Janelle McFadden, and I am the chairman of the Newport News Electoral Board. What is the Electoral Board? It's a three-member board that's appointed by a circuit court judge, and our responsibilities are to administer every aspect of all elections across the city of Newport News. That includes the supervision of the, and oversight of the Director of Elections, also known as the Voter Register, and includes protecting ballots, but it also includes appointing election officials, and that's what I'd like to talk about tonight. We, we need help. We have 45 precincts across Newport News, and we serve about 114,000 voters. But every precinct is staffed with a number of workers, poll workers. So in each precinct, we have anywhere from six to seven workers, and the election officials are hands-on with the equipment and the materials of the election, but they also ensure that the election runs smoothly, that it's customer-driven, and that our basic goal, our main goal, is to make sure that every qualified voter is able to vote. But we also train people as well to do these different jobs at the polls, but then we also pay them. We have three basic categories. We have the chief officials, and they are responsible for running the entire precinct. We have the assistant chiefs who assist the chiefs, and then we have the rest of the election workers, who do everything from work the poll books, you know, when you, when you go to vote and people are checking you in and checking your ID, those people, and then also all the way over to the people who give you the little sticker once you slide your ballot into, into the machine. So we, in the interest of full disclosure, it's a very long day. So you're there before the polls, an hour before the polls open, and you stay all day until the polls, until, after the polls close, and after all the results are tallied and the polling place is put back into its original position. But we can't do it without citizens of Newport News helping us. It's impossible to get the job done. So that's why I'm here, just to ask everybody who can to, to consider being an election official. I actually have brochures here today, if anybody's interested, but if you're not, you can go to the website, the nn.gov, yes, the City of Newport News website, and you can go to the Voter Register's page, and it gives you all the information about becoming an election official.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I heard that there was some consideration for having people that could work for just half-day. Is that true, or are we still on the full day?
No, that is true. We are, for the first time, what we'd like to do is we'd like to roll out what are called half-shiffs. And there would be, we're still coming together for what that's gonna look like, but basically it would be somebody who comes in in the morning and works half a day, and then the, and then the secondary person that comes in midday, but there's an overlap, and works through the, through the end of the night. For those positions, we're, you know, my, my thoughts are those need to be experienced officials, who can, who are able to come in and hit the ground running, because they already know much of the process. But yes, we have, understanding that it's a long day, we will be instituting these half-shiffs for this election on a trial basis. So what's the minimum age? Can you be 18? You can. Okay. How long is, how long is the training? Well, the training is, let me talk about it in the subject of the training. So what we do for, for people who are interested, we have what's called poll book training, because we want people to, you know, one of the biggest jobs that people do is they check people in and check their IDs. So we train all of our, everybody gets trained to work, to work the, to work the book, so to work the poll book, unless they just really don't want to, but we really would like to train everybody there. We don't train the assistant chiefs and the, and the chiefs to be that, but what we would like for people to do, if they believe that they're able to, to run a poll, to run a precinct, we would love to talk with them about it. They should flag themselves for us, and we'll talk to them about that, and then we will, you know, what we normally do is we put them in as an assistant first, they work with the chief, and then we're, you know, we evaluate them to see if they're able to run a poll. But our real need really is assistant chiefs and chiefs, people who are able to run the precincts for us. Yes.
Are there any other qualifications or disqualifications someone would have?
Yes, you need to be a voter in good standing to be, to be an election official. You cannot be candidate for office or hold office. There are few of them. There are a few of the things, and they're listed on the website as well, and they are all, some of them are listed in the brochures that I have, the things I've
In your brochure, do you tell the amount you pay?
Yes, I can tell you, for the chiefs, they make a hundred and seventy dollars for the day, assistant chiefs a one-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars, and the rest of the officials one-hundred-and-ten. And then you also get paid for the training, it's an extra twenty dollars. If you come to the training, you get an extra ten dollars, and we feed you.
Do you have to reside in the district where you, in the city where you are an election official?
No.
Can you be from another city?
You can be, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but yes, you can be from another city. Hampton doesn't want us to recruit over there, though.
They have experience.
Yes, I know. So, they say they have, they have a shortage too, but, but yes, you know, you don't have to be a Newport News resident.
Also, when, uh, how soon do you need to sign up?
Now is good.
Okay, what's the deadline?
Well, the deadline, well, the day before the election, honestly, because we, we always need people. There's an ebb and flow for this. People are always going, you know, and coming, and sometimes, unfortunately, on the, on the morning, somebody will say, ah, I couldn't get up, I'll, I'll do it next time. So, we always need people, and we need a bench, you know, that's dependable. So, 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 so in other words, anybody who wants to, even if it's the day before the election, give us a call. Give us a call.
Ah, and as I understand it, there should be at least some representative from both parties at every precinct, if possible.
Yes, ideally, the chief and the assistant chief need to be two dif, two different parties, okay? So, but the way we do it is we, we have an imbalance. There are far more of one party than another. So, what we do to cover ourselves with the law, which we need to observe that, we, on the form that people fill out, the oath that they take when they, um, you know, become, agree to be, to work the polls for us, it says, there's a, there's a box where you can check one party or the other, and there's another box that says that you would represent any party, so, or either party. So, a lot of people do check that, so even though they're not the other party, they will represent the other party for us, and, and so that's how we're, we're able to do that out of necessity.
Well, I just want to thank you for coming, because I don't think we have ever had that kind of information from our Electoral Board and from our registrar before, so I, I thank you, Ms. McFadden, that you've come and you've
Sure.
given, and educated us.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Terrific, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Adrian Whitcomb?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council, and City Manager, and everybody else here. It's good to be here again. This afternoon, early this afternoon, I was over at Riverview Farm Park, second time since I, uh, started, since I got out of the hospital, but, um, something special about that place. I went out on the scenic overlook. It's the one place you can go out and see the beach and see the waterfront of the City Farm, the one place that's available now to the public. And I also walked up on top of that berm next to the gymnastics center, that, you know, the hill that people sled down in the winter, when there's snow. But I enjoy just going up there and being up high and looking down and being able to see a, a far distance, and it's something about a park like that, where you can see a far distance, I think that's one attraction particularly of, of that park, because you can see over the water, over, over to the other side, you can go up on that hill and look way to the other end of the park. It's an open place. You don't find places like that much anymore in this city. It's so crowded with houses, apartments, businesses, buildings are being built all the time, and that's good in its place, but we also need the, we need nature, we need the trees, we need the open spaces, we need the waterfront. So, today was an especially good day to do it, but any day, uh, it can be good if you can go out early in the morning particularly, or maybe in the evening when things have cooled off some, it's a good time to be walking around out there. And I, from what I've heard, I was there in the middle of the day, but the day was especially nice for that time of day. But, um, there are a lot of people that enjoy that park, and we're looking forward to having a trail there that includes the waterfront, and, uh, we're looking forward to that happening soon. So, thank you, uh, thank you for listening, and hope that you will enjoy the summer, and I'll see you next time. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Those are all the cards I have turned in. We're now at new business. Madam Manager?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing, sir.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, I'd like to offer my congratulations to our Chief Deputy City Clerk, Xena Middleton, who will graduate tomorrow from the city's Leadership Development Academy.
All right. Councilwoman Cherry?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight, and I just have a few announcements, because we only have this one meeting this month, so I guess I need to get everything in now. Yes.
Three minutes.
Praise him. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to say congratulations to my youngest brother, Jeffrey Nelson, who will graduate with his doctorate of philosophy degree the end of this month. We are so proud of him, and just know that I'm sure that Mom and Dad would be proud of you as well, so Jeffrey, kudos to you on your accomplishments. I'd like to say thank you and compliments to Mike Poploski and Parks and Rec for an outstanding July Fourth preparation down at Victory Landing Park, and the fireworks on July the fifth, since we were rained out on July the fourth, so thank you for a great show, actually, on July the fifth. I do want to give some shout-out and birthday celebrations. Happy birthday, belated birthday to my niece, Shaylan, who turned nine yesterday, and I have three brothers, William, Frank, and Jeffrey, who will all celebrate gracefully another age this month as well. As far as community engagement opportunities, I'd just like to make sure that all of the citizens know that there are great things happening in the city of Newport News, and I want to make sure that you're aware of the things that I'm personally involved in and ask you to join us. We will have your Voice Matters South District Town Hall meeting this Thursday, July eleventh at six PM at the Midtown Community Center. We will have our ice cream social this month, and Gary Anderson, our clerk of courts, will be there to answer any questions that you might have, so we're excited about Mr. Anderson coming. We will also have your Voice Matters South District Town Hall meeting on next Thursday, July the eighteenth at six PM, and that one is at the Down and Grills Cultural Arts Center, and that one will be our Summer Game Night, so if you're up to be challenged, come on out and join us for some Summer Games. The Newport News Police Department, South Precinct, we will have Hot Diggity Dog Day. That's coming up. We're celebrating National Hot Dog Day. Many of you may not know that this is such a day, but that we're celebrating that this Saturday, July the thirteenth, from eleven AM to two PM, so we invite you to come out and sample different kinds of dogs, and if you're brave enough, sign up for the hot dog eating contest. The clerks will have some more information for you on that as well. Also, our Newport News Police Department, we engage in the Homicide Family Support Group, and that's gonna be held tomorrow at Police Headquarters at six PM. This is a great support group, and it connects families and people who are facing challenges of losing their loved one, a lost, a loved one to some act of violence. And being a part of this group, I really believe that it has served as a bridge and an opportunity for people to share their feelings, their personal experiences, and the coping routines that they're using right now to remember their loved ones. So, if you have experienced any type of violence in your family and you're interested, please come out to the support group on tomorrow night at six PM. We will have our Junk and Treasure Bazaar on Saturday, July the twentieth, from nine AM to two PM. There's no charge for vending if you want to sell some of your junk or your treasure. The clerks will have information about that as well, so come on out and join us on July the twentieth. Six seventeen twenty-seventh Street is the address for that event. Then, coming up, National Night Out will be celebrated citywide on August sixth, most starting at six PM, and as my motto is, I encourage all of you, all the residents, to get up, get out, get involved, get engaged, and be informed. It's a fun night, you get to eat a lot, and you get to meet your neighbors, so I think that that's, um, a good event to turn on August the sixth as well. And then the last thing that I have, Mr. Mayor, this time, is join us and celebrate Queen Esther Merrill. She is a musical icon from the city of Newport News, and she will be in concert on July the twentieth at eight PM at the American Theater. Tickets can be purchased on ticketmaster.com or at the American Theater Box Office off Mellon Street in Hampton, Virginia. Thank you.
Councilman Harris?
Uh, yes, and good evening to everybody that is here and in attendance and watching via the various media streams. I do want to, once again, say congratulations to the catalyst effect and the great work that those young people are doing under Mr. Cortez-Higgs leadership. They are, do a great deal for families in our community, and, and it's just, you know, overwhelms me to see those young people for what they're standing for and bringing awareness to some of the, the challenges that we face in our city. Just want to especially highlight two of those young men that were a part of the catalyst effect, Mr. Colby Miller and Mr. Satya Higgs, is they're both young men from the school that I work at Denby High School, and a part of my leadership mentorship group at Denby as well. But why, the reason I want to highlight them, because both of those young men, they're, they'll be rising juniors, and they hold over a four-point-oh GPA, and when, we always celebrate, you know, some of our athletic feats, I want to make sure they're acknowledged for their academic achievements that they've been throughout the course of their time in high school, so. I wish they could've stayed, so I, but I'll make sure they see the video to let them know that I acknowledged them on tonight for the great work they're doing in the community and also in the schools. This past week, a good friend of mine, Mr. Tracy Parker, held an Autism Crush Festival at King Lincoln Park, which he provided resources for families that have family members that have, that are autistic, and it was his first annual event, and it was a great turnout, a lot of great information that was shared, and they were able to highlight performers, local performers, on the entertainment side of it, and it was just an overall great event. So, congratulations to you, Tracy Parker, for stepping it out, and his organization is the Friendship Lottery, and they're doing a great work here in our city, trying to, you know, make sure we're doing all we can to keep our citizens engaged and activated, as Dr. Cherry would say, to do great work. And that's all that I have for tonight. Mayor Price?
Councilman Jenkins?
Earlier this evening, I did not talk about my voting against the CIP, but I do want to spend just a couple of minutes now. Like Councilwoman Cherry, I have some concerns about some of the economic development projects we have going on. Like Councilwoman Scott, I believe that we do need to support the one-city concept, and like many of our citizens here tonight, I believe we need to do more for our schools. But beyond that, adding a little bit from my own perspective, I believe that we need to get better at planning and accomplishing projects for our city, and ensuring that when people are expecting projects to be completed, they're done, and not constantly postponed and, and delayed. I also would hope that when we develop, I guess, this CIP, when we take it back to the drawing board and future ones for our city, that we have greater participation from the City Council and public leaders, so that we can discuss the projects in our different parts of our, of our city, and come to an agreement on projects that we will all support moving forward in the future. And that's all I have for this evening.
Before I make any comments, I'd like to, I guess, ask the manager what next steps are, so that the public can understand, one, what we did here tonight by not passing this EIP, its effect on the city, and what our next steps are.
Well, obviously, we'll go back and have conversations at, at the staff level. I mean, we've heard all of the comments. To address a couple of the, first of all, none of the projects that are listed can move forward at this particular point in time, so none of the things that we showed you under nineteen and twenty, and a lot of the projects you're talking about were in the out years. None of the projects can move forward till we get some type of authorization from council. We'll obviously go back. I understand the concerns that have been raised about development. However, those projects are already in the works. You've committed, the funding is out there, so there's not, there's not anything that we can do at this point to address those. I'll go back and take a look at some of the other development projects that are in there, but they're not any high-dollar projects beyond the few dollars that you saw in there, so I'm, I'm not exactly sure. Conversations about future garages, we've not had, and we've not committed to do any funding for those, so I guess we're gonna have to go back, and we'll have some additional conversations with council. At council's, my understanding and council's direction was to add some additional projects for schools. We did that. At the time, when we told you we were doing that, the projects would have to get pushed back, because what we gave you was a CIP that was proposed and recommended based on what the city could afford, and that's still where we are. We'll take a look back, and some of those projects that we added in maybe can be pushed back, or if that's not council's choice, we'll come back and tell you about what revenue enhancements you may have to do. I am telling you, and the numbers that we have showed you within the city's current capacity, we can, what we provided to you was what we could afford in a timeline that we thought was affordable. If council wants to do more, we certainly can come back and tell you, but I'm telling you where we are right now with revenues, we cannot afford those additional projects in a condensed timeframe over the next couple of years. We never like pushing things back. It has been my goal, and I've had the conversation with Councilman Jenkins, we need to do a better job. People need to understand when there are projects in the CIP that we get to move them forward. Priorities come up, priorities change. The priorities, I can't even say priorities, but the projects that were funded with the parking garage and Scott were things that were done outside the CIP. It's not an excuse, they still have to be paid for, and there's still that balance in the operating budget, and I will tell you again, when it comes to the CIP, it's gotta be paid for. The more projects you go out and get, the more debt, so sooner or later, that balance, unless we have an enhancement in revenues, that, it's gonna come out of balance, and you will not be able to do the things that you've said you want to do in the operating budget, whether it's additional funding and operations for schools, whether it's new programs, whether it's giving raises, whether it's doing equipment for police and fire, there's a balance there without some additional revenue enhancements. But right now, until we can come back with council, and this wouldn't be the first time, my understanding, in the history that we didn't have a CIP, and if that's where you want to go, and you want to start from scratch, and we start over the next couple of months, and there is no twenty CIP, and we work towards twenty-one, I cannot recommend that based on the projects that are in there, because I, as I told you, we scaled them back dramatically. The only funding that was given at the level that we were requested was to the schools. The projects for, a lot of the city's projects, we cut over thirty million dollars out. We gave you something that we thought was affordable that we could do. I understand the, the concerns, but those aren't things that, those are things in the future, and I'm, I'm not quite sure how to address things in the future till we have those conversations, but we'll go back and talk to, to staff about it, there may be things that can be moved out. Into other years, we intentionally kept the out years of twenty-twenty-four to give us some room for some growth there, to add some additional projects. We can go back and, I cannot recommend to you that you increase the amount that you go out right now for, for projects. I just don't think the capacity is there. If you choose to do that, we'll work with you, but there has to be some revenue enhancements, and they will be substantial, and we'll go through that information with you the next work session we have, everything from what a penny on the tax rate brings you. And we'll, we can talk about those revenue things. We might, after talking to staff, come back to, and tell you, you know, we wouldn't recommend at this time that we proceed with the twenty-twenty budget, or we pick out projects and do just those projects and get, uh, your sign-off on certain projects and not the plan. But again, we need to go back, and we need to talk to staff, and need to take into consideration all the things we've heard from council about your various projects, and we may have to take another look at some of the things that we're at, and to go to your points, put them at the, at the end of the list. We just need to take another look at that.
Yeah, and I think that everybody needs to understand, like I've said before, even during the budget time, you know, in an ideal world, everything that every department submits about their expenses and things they want to improve in their departments, for the entire city, in an ideal world, we would want to have the money and just wave a magic wand and fund everything. But the reality, as we have, as we know it, with not just this city, but so many localities with businesses, everybody has a budget to work with. And unfortunately, everything can't be funded. So, we have to pick and choose what we can afford to pay for is, is, is business. And so, that is where we are. And I know certain people want different projects, but we are going to have to really figure out, without being so overextended with so much debt, what we can afford and how we're going to move forward successfully.
If I might just add, which one point I didn't make, as we explained to Council and have through the process, just what we have that was affordable is going to add at least four or five million dollars off the top into your operating budget in 2021. So, before you get a bit of revenue, you've got to cover that debt. And that will impact what you are able to do in your operating budget. And we just need to make sure that there is that balance in what you're doing in the CIP and the impact of that and put it in that context so that you recognize if you want to do some of these things in the CIP, you're not going to be able to do these things in the operating budget. And when there are different programs and things added or a pool, there's operating costs associated. All those things have to be factored into that as well. But we'll go, we will absolutely go back and we'll, we'll give it, we'll give it another shot and we'll come back to you with recommendations. But at this point in time, I, I cannot tell you from what I am seeing that we can recommend that we can do all those projects in the timeline that was originally discussed. But we will give it our best shot, and Lisa's smiling at me back there in Cory, so we want to be responsive to you.
Well, as I said, I wanted the manager to have the opportunity to, to let the public know the impact of the decision. Personally, I'm a little disappointed that during work sessions, that if you weren't going to support the budget, it'd be known so that we could try and have time to work that out to get to this point. One of the things that I hope we understand is that funding is only done for one year. A lot of things are put in as placeholders that are going to give us time that following year to discuss those matters. So, the impact that we've done tonight is one, I think, to delay some of the things that are already in progress. We're not meeting at the end of this month, so it'll be August before we have the opportunity to vote again. So, I just want us to be aware that I think staff, along with the manager, kind of gets a feel of what the, the majority of Council would and would not vote for. So, if your project probably wasn't placed where you want it, it's probably she got the feeling that the rest of the Council probably wouldn't have wanted that there. So, and I'm speaking just for me. I have not had any consultation with budget or the manager. But to me, when you're trying to build a plan, you try and get a feel for where people And we talk about being one city, and now all I've heard today is my district, my district, my district.
Yes.
And that is not one city. When things happen anywhere in this city, we all should be proud of it. And I know that some things happen a lot longer, and we could all have an argument about, well, I haven't had this done in 20 years. Southeast hasn't had this done. The North hasn't had that done. There's not but so much money. And if we come up and say, okay, we're going to do these things and we're going to raise taxes, this room is going to be full. Or people saying, don't raise my taxes. I'm moving out of the city. That's the first thing we're going to hear. But we have to understand that this is a democratic process, and the majority of people who voice their opinions need to be able, as has happened tonight, the majority rules. And we're going to go back and I think try and find some kind of way. But I hope, and I hope we get a chance during a retreat, to really sit down and look at where we're going and how this process is working. But I, as I've just, disappointed. Councilwoman Scott?
I'm disappointed too. I understand.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm like, you know, levitating just a little bit today because at all times, I was clear on my position of what I thought the North District should have. Yeah, he said, we talking about our district, but you look, I don't have to, we talking, yeah, but I can look at the CIP, I can see where the money's going in other districts. So, yes, I do feel some kind of way about it. And I've been here long enough to know what budgets look like, what CIPs look like, how it works, what moves, who does what. And for somebody on the Council to say they're part of one city and they don't see the benefit of spreading the resources equitably, I have a problem with that. So, you know, we can talk about one city all kind of ways. We can make it a buzzword, or either we can go ahead and make it one city and try to give each district something. I understand we can't get everything at one time, but we've gotten nothing. We had three projects, three major projects in 20 years. Now, you're talking about one city. So, you know what, I, I, I'm a little hyped. I, I didn't know what my colleagues were going to do. I didn't vote with my colleagues. Each one of us made our own independent decisions. So, I, I'm as surprised as, as everybody else that, you know, it did fail. But I think it's an opportunity to go back to the table to talk about this, and each district should get something at once. And I've supported everything, development, I've supported everything that they say economic engine, I've supported the South needed to be cleaned up, the corridor needed to spend $14 million on one mile of street, you know, we need to do overhead wires and all kinds of things in the South District. I've supported those things. And when it comes to the North District, yes, I am an advocate for my citizens who voted for me. So, yes, I am going to be passionate about what we should get in the North District. And I'm glad to see some of the things that are coming down the pike, but I think that we deserve an opportunity to get at least one or two projects here and there. So, I'm, I'm going to continue to advocate and, and yes, my passion is going to shine through. So, you know, if you're offended by it, I can't, can't even apologize, but I, it's just that, yes, I am going to talk about the North District because we have been neglected, if you want to talk about it, in a sense of where the money is going. The first part of it, we'll be on a bus tour, so I'm sure we can get more definitive information as to what time the presentation starts. And those who want to come, I, I would like for those who do choose to come. And there are some, the North District is, is kind of interesting as all our districts are different, the dynamics, the demographics and everything. And the North District, they are really in Council either, so I typically don't host a meeting in July. So, we will reconvene in August in time to talk about what's going on with the back-to-school On a positive note, it was a pleasure to attend the USS Newport News reception last night for the military. It was really a great turnout, and it was interesting just to talk to the people who actually are not from Newport News, but they came over to attend the event. The chief is shaking his hands. We had some really good conversation with all the different people that were there. And they had a commander who looked like he was 16, and that was really interesting. And, and he is the commander of the USS Newport News. But more importantly, it was the pride that they expressed at being on a, on the vessel called the US Newport News. So, I, it just kind of warmed my heart to, to be there with my colleagues last night to celebrate that. And I just want to take upon a privilege to offer up prayer for a friend of mine who has been a big supporter. He's done a lot in Newport News, Mike Kuzma. He has been a bit under the weather, and I'm just asking you all to pray for his comfort as he goes through this, this difficult time in his life. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Vick.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I also want to give, usually, somebody knows what's going on. And even though it, it sounds easy to do, we know how difficult it is when people are afraid, but just the courage and the foresight of this young group headed by Mr. Cortez-Higgs and his daughter to be able to be advocates, we can hide away from this violence, or are we going to take a stand in our neighborhoods and don't allow the undesirables and the people who are making life difficult for people, to take a stand and, for our communities and our neighborhoods to say, we're not going to allow this. So, I am really excited about this group and their energy, and I want to support, make sure I support their events, and they have been throughout the city. Also want to say how deeply honored I was to attend and congratulate our Newport News Shipyard Apprentice School on celebrating 100 years. The apprentice school was started in 1919, and they have been able to provide education and training for so many people, not only in this city, but people who have come to attend apprentice school from other areas. So, it was such a lively crowd there at the Marriott. And I do want to say again, congratulations to a place that works in a spirit of excellence to educate the young people and to provide the craft of engineering to, so that they can have a good quality of life because of the jobs they provide in our shipyard. And again, what can I say? Great job to Mike Popilowski and all the team, the effort, the professionals from our city, from our, the volunteers who made our Fourth of July here in Newport News at Victory Landing Park such a success. It made my heart overjoyed to be able to see with that band, the Full Spectrum Band. They were a group of serve Air Force, I can't say Air Force men, but people, because they were men and women. And they were really some stars, but they sang music to embrace the entire group. And I tell you, I've been to a lot of these events, but I had never seen so much dancing out there by all people, just a mixture, really celebrating and having fun right here in our city in Newport News. And that's what we want our citizens to do, and life is all about the joy of the, the activities we can have to enhance our citizens' lives. And on a much sadder note, I just want to give my condolences to Lefty Miller. Mr. Lefty Miller, I believe he works in our Public Works Department, but on the passing of his wife, Ms. Anya Rose Miller, she was a staple in the community, always volunteering at our Boys and Girls Club on Hampton Roads, on Hampton Avenue. She worked for our Transportation Department with our school system for 35 years, and part of it included the training. And she had such an impact on the lives of the citizens. Her service, celebration services were at New Hope Baptist Church with Pastor Carter, and it was not an extra seat in the, in the place. My condolences to the Rose family. They have been such wonderful people, and she truly is already missed. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Vick.
Yes, I want to express my great disappointment at not passing our CIP and surprise because I don't understand anybody who says we haven't had a lot of input. And I want to congratulate our city manager and our Chief of Finances because just about every, every work session, we have had presentations from all the departments and had time to input whatever it was you were thinking needed to be done. And I haven't heard any, any negative until tonight. There have been mistakes made, many mistakes made in some of our projects where I remember years ago, Symantec had 10 years free, you know, free, these things have to be done. 10 years of free taxes, and after 10 years, they left. So, there should be a lesson learned there, and that was. Because since I've been on, I have tried to monitor that that doesn't happen. But I really am shocked because we have given the schools so much money in the CIP and in the operating budget that about, all of the projects for the Newport News citizens have gotten done away with. So, how can you say we have not met expectations? It just, doesn't make sense to me. But I am disappointed because I think leaders need to learn to work together with their staff and with the people who serve them. And I, I just think it is a bad example for our community to see that we can't do that or decide not to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments? If not, may what you say and do uplift the citizens of Newport News. We stand adjourned.